Good evening, everybody. Welcome back from a summer break. I'd like to call to order the August 26, 2019, regular meeting of council to order at 7:00 PM. And I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved by councillor Parkinson, seconded by councillor Jensen. Any additions? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Public participation. I would like to invite anyone present to take this opportunity to address council, to present concerns or questions of council. Comments pertaining to a matter that has been the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where bylaws related to the matter have not been presented to council for consideration of adoption. There is a maximum of 20 minutes allocated for public participation. Topics should be addressed briefly to allow other speakers an opportunity to address council. Saying that, I would welcome the public. If anyone has anything they would like to share, come on up. And when you do, if you don't mind just telling us your name and your address, that would be great.
Hello, Art Ramirez, 3457 Curly Street in Royal Bay. Here to address the issue of animal control Esquimal Lagoon, specifically the need to require old dogs to be unleashed at the beach area, at least during the summer months, similar to other municipalities in this area. The issue of dogs and leashes was brought to council on April 23rd. The motion was put forth to require dogs to be unleashed, be unleashed, not banned, but the responses from certain councillors were loof and dismissive. Councillor Logan, for example, said that this wasn't a subject that people have set their hair on fire. Well, I'm here to tell you that it is something that does matter. I don't want to set my hair on fire, I have very little of it, but it is something very important. I also wanted to mention that there was a lot of confusion because there had been a lot of discussion on this topic and a map had erroneously been uploaded to the website. And so I think that, at least for me as a resident, it was not clear as to what this entailed and also the means to participate at these council meetings. So what I would say in that regard is that I understand that many, if not all, the people here present are responsible dog owners. I get it. But some are simply just not. And those of us with small children, you know, have an issue with that. You know, if I have a six-year-old and a two-year-old, if I see an off-leash dog running towards my children, I cannot ascertain the dog's intentions. So if I were to run to you, any one of you, for example, with my heads up in the air, you'd probably be wondering the same thing. Now, I'm not alone because I'm sure that everybody has gotten this in the mail, so I think it's quite germane and timely. It's something from Canada Post reminding you that old dogs, big or small, can regardless of breed, bite. So this is something that I think is, we need to take note. Again, trying to keep it quick here because there's other people here waiting to talk. The city of Colwood issued a report on February this year estimating that there's a population growth estimate of nearly 6,000 people between 2016 and 2028. Most of the growth is expected to come from Colwood Corners and Royal Bay, where I live. So if you come down for a visit lately, I encourage you to do so. It's becoming a really, really beautiful neighborhood, at least the second part. You see lots of kids now, lots, young, just on my way here, actually, that, you know, there was one of the neighbors with a brand-new newborn. So there's going to be a lot more families here with small kids. Now, again, I understand that everybody has small dogs, big dogs, all breeds and sizes, but we just don't have the space anymore. When Colwood was a rural community, I understand, you know, you could have your dogs out and it would be no bother. But now, now that we have events like the Eats and Beats and you see these dogs coming up to you, I mean, just recently, actually, I was at the beach and, you know, I'm here with my toddler, she's two. Now, she could fall, she could get hurt, she could, and somebody's small dog, you know, came in there and sure enough, you know, almost knocked her over. Now, I don't know, when was the last time you folks went to the emergency room, but I can tell you that it is not fun. So I don't want to be in the emergency room just because somebody's dog says, "Okay, well, hey, don't worry about it, my dog's friendly." Well, that's great, but I don't want my dog to be, sorry, my toddler to be affected by your out-of-control dog. So it's something very simple. We're not saying, "Hey, let's ban dogs." We're just saying, "Hey, you know, it's really busy in the summer here." And I know that everybody came from summer break, it's the end, but it's something that needs to be taken into account because, as I said, 6,000 people, I imagine there's going to be 6,000 people plus the people from Langford and other neighboring communities coming to Eats and Beats, for example. And all of us deserve to have a place in that very, very small real estate. So I had more to say, but I think that encompasses the point. And thank you for your time and I'll let others speak.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for coming out and I appreciate you taking the time to share your thoughts with us.
My name is Dennis Noble, 818 Bexhill Place. I wanted to speak about a problem I have with bylaw 1500, that's the sewer bylaw. I've talked to engineers here and they've acknowledged the fact that there is a problem, but they're looking, I suppose, at the fact that the sewers won't be up in my area in my lifetime and maybe my children's lifetime and my children's children's lifetime, but I worry about their children. Okay? And so if we could have a slight change to bylaw 15, if I could just read to make sure that we understand what owner means. On page three of sewer bylaw 1500, it says owner means any person, firm, or corporation that owns property. So I understand that to mean property owner. Now, I bring this up because what I'm going to be reading sometimes refers to owner and we're not too sure exactly what owner we're talking about. At 3.4.4, "The city engineer may give notice to an owner that the owner must do some or all of the following work within the time specified by the city engineer. Conduct tests and investigations, including smoke die, other procedures on the property to detect leakage, crossconnections, inflows, and infiltrations. Remove or decommission a septic tank on property that has been connected to the sewer system in accordance with applicable enactments. Remove and dispose of any contaminant that is deposited into any part of the sewer system from the owner's property, from all private service pipes, sewer connections, works, city sewer mains, sewer lift stations, and other parts of the sewer system." Now, 3.4.5, "If an owner fails to perform any work directed by the city engineer, the city or its agent may enter onto the property and perform the work at the owner's expense." 3.4.6, "The cost of doing any works pursuant to 3.4.5 of this bylaw that are not paid by the owner of the property, as well as any unpaid sewer connection fee, enhancement fee, or sewer user fee, may be collected in the same manner and with the same remedies as property taxes." Now, you hear that and you say, "So what's the problem?" The problem is this. I have the property, but the septic tank is not mine. It is not used by me. But the law says that when a sewer comes up to my neighbor's property and he hooks up, I have to pay for the disposal of the septic tank, which is totally unreasonable. Now, engineers, as I said in the past, have agreed, yes, that is unreasonable, but nothing has happened and nothing hasn't been done, and I think it has. There will be a lot of litigation, I think, in the future when people discover that they have that very same situation. You may not have heard of it before this time because I'm probably one of the only citizens in the whole of Colwood who's actually read this, this bylaw. So I would recommend, I would appreciate if this were to happen, that a change is being made so that the septic tank owner pays for the decommissioning or removal. And one other addition is that the property owners should have a say in the manner of the decommissioning or removal. Okay, I thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for bringing that to our attention through our CAO. I'm sure he will direct staff to look at that and it'll be brought back to a future council meeting to discuss, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public participation?
Frank Verdi, 152 Milburn. I wasn't going to come today, but I got to get this off my chest, but I feel a lot better. August 7, my brother and I finished our walk through Ocean Boulevard. A car stops by that little bungalow that's for sale, and as we get closer, we recognize each other. On driving was Roger Amel on the passenger seat. And she opened the door and asked me, "Frank, do you know what they're asking for, that bungalow?" And I said, "I believe Mike did, and they're asking 830,000." Then I replied to her, "Look, you can build up, see what they're doing in your old property there." And she says, "That's big enough for us." And that's how we planned, we had planned to do on that lot. And then she goes on and, which I don't know, she goes on and explains that she thought they were doing everything right, following all the right rules and steps and whatever. And then she breaks down crying. Okay, that's what disturbed me the most. Now, she breaks down crying, now, me knowing one of their roadblocks, if not the major one, was the 30 square meters that they were short. So, and Mike also was approached for the 30 square meters, I was approached for the 30 square meter. So looking into that, it says, "Wait a minute, the new building that's going up is still short 30 square meters, and that's no bungalow that they're building there." Okay? Now, about a month or so ago, four of us, three of us are here, and we met with you and your secretary, and I did ask you a question, and I said, and you, "Why Amel wasn't allowed to build?" And you replied, "We stopped them." I had a following-up question, which I should have asked then, but it's actually even better to be asked here, right? If, my following-up question to you is, which I'll never know the truth, I'll tell you that right now, is, "Does the present builders or the general contractor have a foot in the door with the Colwood Planning Department?" And you don't have to answer because I know I'll never get the right answer. And I'm going to leave it here, I can go on, but I think this will give you the message with, when this woman broke up crying, I got affected. Never mind being affected by the building, you know, that's besides the point, but that really hit home with me. And I really feel what they've gone through, what they're going through, and I hope, I hope they can go on, just behind, go on with their lives, because if they don't, there's who has a good case for lawsuit against you. And I'll leave it here. Thank you for listening.
I would actually ask you tomorrow, if you don't mind following up with me, just because I'm a little fuzzy on a couple things, but I would love to actually follow up and figure out exactly some of this. So I don't want to get into in-depth tonight, but yeah, if you don't mind following up with me tomorrow, then that'd be great.
Tomorrow, you said?
Yeah, follow up tomorrow. Well, yeah, I mean, anytime this week.
No, tomorrow is a bad day.
Follow up with me later this week, that'd be great. I appreciate it, thank you. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, my name is Bob Harris and I live at 154 Milburn Drive. And I'm here because I'm kind of concerned that this big monstrous house, a couple doors down from me, we ask questions to the different departments and everybody's going to get back to us and we get nothing. I was at a meeting with you recently and I asked for a copy of the shorthand notes because I don't do shorthand well. Still nothing, no reply. We get no replies from this city council. I don't know, is there a reason?
Well, you know, from a note standpoint, I know when I spoke to Nora, Nora was not taking notes, like as in short form, like as in they were meeting notes. She was taking notes for me, for, you know, for me to follow up on things. So they weren't really appropriate notes to like be shared with because they weren't really, they weren't meeting notes. They were notes of things to follow up on.
Well, at the time, it was okay, they were going to be sent to me.
Well, I'm just letting you know what was communicated to me. But if you feel as though there are subjects that you feel as though you have not been fully educated on, we are more than open to figure out what those are. I know when we discussed it, when you were in the mayor's office with me, we went through and it seemed to me, though, although you weren't happy with the answers, that you understood what the answers were because we were talking about, for example, the height of the building and the building conformed, I believe it was 29 meters, and the measurement was at 28 meters. So, I mean, there were definitely answers that you, I know this group was not happy with, but I thought all the answers were there. If you feel as though that there are answers that are still outstanding that you have not received, please follow up with me tomorrow and I'll make sure that you get those. And you can hold me accountable to that at the next council meeting. If you feel as though you haven't got those answers by the next council meeting...
One of them is, we were told that we were all mailed out notices as to the zoning, and your staff was going to look into it because we mailed them out. Well, they didn't mail them out because nobody in the neighborhood got them. Now, we still don't have an answer on that.
Well, I will ensure that you're answered tomorrow on that one specifically.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out, I appreciate it, and I appreciate that. And I apologize that you're feeling frustrated at the present time because I get that as well, so. And I'm just, I'm looking at your staff, you're making sure you're following up, okay?
Why Amel, they wanted to build a bungalow, he's got Parkinson's disease, by the way.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members from public who would like to, this is, we're still in public participation? Yep, come on up.
Hey, you worship members of council, first time I've been here in a while, nice to see some old faces. Nice to see it as a point of order, nice to see a young lady out there growing incredible tomatoes in the city of Colwood in a really nice, it's looking better and better every year. I only wish we could get it in Langford. It really is, it's a pleasure to talk to young people that are growing gardens for the first time, so I support what you've done. One little question I have for you, it rose out of the concern I raised about that left turn into the new school down at Colwood Corner. And it was John Conquest, a friend of mine, he wrote a letter, he was appeasing with the Ministry of Highways for several years, about the concern we had. And the incident I almost had when I came from Colwood Corner and the van decided to turn left in front of me at that cut, which is not wide enough for a vehicle to fit in, and I came very close to having a serious accident. There was no room for me to get into the right-hand lane. Anyway, since then, you barrier it for quite a while, then you turned, you took the barrier down, took the no post, the little posts out, and then you, and the ribbon out, and you put in a sign that said basically, "No left turn" at that point. Having worked in industrial health and safety for 30 years or 40 years, almost, almost 40 years altogether at Conag, we dealt with a lot of highway crossings and things that are dangerous. And when there are incidents like that, you've got to look at them and say, "Hmm, is there a factor here?" Well, my concern now is that you put the sign up, just coming from the, coming from the north, but the sign sits in behind a nice tree. So it's not going to be very long before this, it's going to overgrow and you won't be able to see too much of the sign. But the thing is, consider the fact that the majority of the students from that school are foreign students. Put the two and two together, their parents come to visit or whatever else, they're not used to driving here, whatever, and they see that cut in that, in that island there. Well, it's interesting that your next cut you put in by Colwood School doesn't have one of those little sneaky, little lanes into the thing. You can't do it there at all. And I'm just wondering if, what the position of the engineering department is, is the risk of it been eliminated? I don't really believe it has. But thanks for doing what you've done so far, but I think it's solved. I just hope there's not an incident there, Rob.
Thank you. It's my understanding with what you're talking about right now, that has still not been accepted by the city. We're still in the works stage of that, and I know we've been in a long discussions with Brooke School about that. I'm not expecting staff to respond at all, but is there any additional things that, and what I said is correct? We haven't accepted it yet, correct?
Yes, what you said is correct, and I can reach out to Mr. Willing tomorrow and find out more particulars.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. We're getting close to our 20 minutes, but I do not want to stop anybody if somebody has a burning issue that they feel important to get in front. We'll give one more opportunity.
Charles Maximilian, 3437 Blue Sky Place. I just, a point of clarification, are we in discussion on item 881?
Yeah, we're in public participation right now, so you can comment on anything that's on tonight's agenda. This is your opportunity now, so if you want to comment on that, please do it now.
Is there going to be room for comment after we...
No. Well, once we get to, once I leave public participation, this becomes a council meeting and we don't take any more information from the public, so please, please share any thoughts that you have about 8.1 right now with us.
All I can say is I'm not quite clear if this, if this item is being put forward by council as their recommendation or if there's any issues with it.
Yeah, so what happened was last week, we were in committee of the whole, and the committee of the whole made a recommendation to council, and what the recommendation that you see before you tonight is what came from committee of the whole. So normal process would be that council would consider and probably support what's coming from committee of the whole, although I can't promise that this evening, but that is what was discussed. So that's most likely, that will be the recommendation coming out of this evening.
Is there a possibility that a vote would take place on the issue?
Yes, it will take place tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, it will happen when we get to 8.1.
That's all I want.
Great, thank you. Yep, yep, come on up.
Sorry, I didn't realize that was open for discussion tonight. I haven't read this yet, I just found out about this today. The question about the dam up top and the remediation of that dam, I guess, one of the questions I have for it is, has this been recommended by the Environment Ministry that this upgrade be done? You don't have one problem up there, and which I don't think that this one is really that much of a problem, but I'll tell you, the problem on the other side, we dealt with this a couple of years ago, if you remember? You know, the piece of property just below the top of the hill on, over the hump, and that was at, that was at, what's the name of it? Beck's Hill, just before Beck's Hill on the right-hand side. There's another dam there. And we did a lot of paperwork on that, Ron, the neighbor, Ron, the adjoining neighbor had trouble there. And that problem, I don't know if you addressed it in the committee of whole or not, but that should be included if you're going to do anything up there. Those dams, I don't know, historically, I think Michael Baxter asked me once about, what I knew about the history of those, of the dam up there, and actually, the same owner built both dams. He built them in about, I'd say it was 1960 that they were put in, and one was put in, the lake was put in for fire protection, and the other one was, I think, for his own fire protection on the other side of the hill, and it was built below his house. Which one to me is the most dangerous, having seen both of them? I saw them both being built, because when we were Cub and Scouts, we used to play, that was our playground up there in our training area, we'd go up on the hill. But the one on the, below Beck's Hill is much more dangerous really because that is, anytime you go and see a, what they call an earth-filled dam, you'll notice one thing in an earth-filled dam, that, including the, our one at the watershed at Suk Lake, there is no vegetation on the face of an earth-filled dam. That's number one rule, because if there's vegetation in there, then it could be compromised if a tree dies or something changes in the earth, that's a root for water out of there, and that's the most dangerous thing that could happen to an earth-filled dam. The one that's on the Beck's, below Beck's Hill, it's a convoluted story, it was, nothing was done by a previous council to solve the problem, and the owner of the house, who was directly affected by it, took it upon himself to put a bypass in there with a drain, but there are no guarantees that will work. And the problem with that one is that there's probably 1,000 meters of fill on the face of that dam with a vast amount of vegetation, some alive, some dying, and if that ever blocks up and goes over the top of that dam, it could take, potentially take about, I'd say, up to 1,000 tons of fill down that hill, about 200 feet, into at least three houses that would be below, and the results could be catastrophic. But on the other side, I've seen no vegetation on the lake. I can't understand why we'd want to spend any huge amounts of money there, I don't think it's a huge fix. That lake is on what they call a fall of land, it's part, it can actually go either way. The water could either go to La Torre Creek and go to the east, or the way it's set up now is that water goes down and it goes west and goes down in Bilston and winds up in Machosen in Woody's Lagoon. But I think if you're doing this, you need to do a lot more work on just what is involved up there because both of these things do need, I guess, a small amount of work to be done, I think, to resolve the problem, but they shouldn't be left. And usually, that's the responsibility of the ministry to come out and examine that type of thing. And if, the ministry should have done a report on both of them, that they were foot-dragging the whole time we were trying to fight Ron's way through the one on the Beck's Hill side. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I am, I'm going to close off public participation now, just because we went 10 minutes over. So thank you, thank you this evening, though, for everybody to come out, and obviously, there was some pent-up energy to share some information with us, so I very much appreciate that. So first of all, welcome back, I'm now in mayor's message. You might see that we've tried a different configuration with staff tables, we're trying to see if this is going to work. Council was having a bit of a problem when the staff were out on the wings a little more, so we're going to, we're going to have a look at this and then staff, or excuse me, council's going to respond back to me if this works or not, and then we're going to try and finalize a configuration fairly soon. One of the first things I want to say is welcome to our new CAO. Robert Earl has come from Banff, and he's been with Banff for 15 years, and we are thrilled to have him here in Colwood, the 25th best community in Canada, supposedly by McLean's. And I think you, Robert's been here two weeks, and I think he sees the energy and the enthusiasm that this council and that this community has, and I think he's, he gets it, and there's going to be a lot of energy, and I know Robert brings a lot of skill sets to this, so welcome. So thanks for being here with us. The second thing is, we did receive a changemaker gathering. The city received a letter of thanks from the McColla Housing for our contribution towards the changemaker gathering event that happened this past June to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. The gathering brought people together through sport, art, food, and celebration. We're going to, it's later on in the agenda this evening, so we'll talk about it a little more in depth then, but myself, councillor Jensen, and councillor Kobayashi attended with me to the Sarah Beckett Memorial Playground announcement. With the help of our local, excuse me, with the help of our local Rotary Club, the Sarah Beckett Memorial Playground opened this weekend in Langford. Let us never forget the risks that our RCMP take on a daily basis to keep our communities safe. This park will create, hopefully, some wonderful memories for a lot of young people, and also I hope that it's a comfort to the Beckett family. I'd also like to remind everyone that we're getting very close to back to school, and with kids returning to school next week, the roads will be additionally busy, and we ask that people, please take that extra time to drive safely and make sure that you give yourself a little more time to get to work, because it gets a little crazy. The city has arranged for crosswalks and stop bars to be repainted before school starts each year, so hopefully... each year, so hopefully, most of them will be bright and clear to maximize safety, and that work is happening presently. A reminder, we have a photo calendar contest that we're working through right now. And people have been submitting amazing photos for the first ever 2020 Callwood Calendar. Submissions will be open for the next three months, so I encourage the public to continue to send us some photos. Each month, we have a different theme, and so I encourage you to go to the website to have a look at what those themes are. For those of you who hopefully are sports fans, and hopefully most of you are, we're celebrating the fact that Shamrocks have won the Western Lacrosse League, and so that starting on September 6th, they will be hosting the Man Cup here in Victoria at the Q Center, here in Callwood, actually, from September 6th to the 14th. The games are scheduled right now to happen in Callwood at the Q Center on the 6th, the 7th, the 9th, the 10th, and then depending on wins and losses, the 11th, the 13th, and the 14th. So I believe it's either Six Nations, or I think they're playing Peterborough. So we'll be one of those two teams. I know the last game, it was a complete sellout, and the stadium's an awesome place to be, especially when all that energy's there. So as well, it's Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. This form of cancer is the most common cancer in men, but the survival rate is 100% when detected early. The City of Callwood supports Prostate Cancer Canada, and everyone committed to raising awareness about this disease. And I have signed a proclamation declaring Callwood the Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. I also wanted to take, and I apologize, I don't usually try and talk this much during Mayor's Message, but I do want to acknowledge our summer events, because we're away most of the summer. Finally, I want to thank everyone who participated in the city's beach events this summer. Eats and Beats brought in about 8,000 people to our waterfront for that one-day event, and we've seen hundreds upon hundreds of happy families enjoying the beach with great food and wonderful music every Friday and Saturday night throughout the summer. I want to specifically thank the Callwood businesses who sponsored the bands this year. So we actually had sponsors who supported the bands that, and the music that was happening on Friday and Saturday nights. It was a great way to promote local Callwood businesses, who are the backbone of our economy, while sharing fun and building relationships. Those companies included the Callwood Dental Group, Coast Collective Art Gallery, Dantex IT Solutions, Eagle Rise Animal Hospital, Gillis Plumbing, Island Junk Solutions, Tim Hortons, which is locally owned, Tone the Zone Fitness, and Wild Play Element Parks, all sponsored Callwood events this summer, which I think is spectacular. Before I move on to the next subject, I'll give an opportunity to council. Is there anything that council wishes to share about the summer? Nope. All right, then seeing none, we're going to move on to 5, 5.1, adoptions. I'm looking for a motion to receive the regular council meetings of July 8th. Thank you, moved by Councillor Kobayashi, seconded by Councillor Parkinson. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 5.2, Committee of the Whole meetings of July 2nd, moved by Councillor Jensen, seconded by Councillor Logan. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 6.1, we have a District of Machozen correspondence regarding the Royal Bay Waterfront Pre-feasibility Study Passenger Ferry. Move, receipt, Your Worship? Thank you, moved by Councillor Logan, seconded by Councillor Jensen. Thank you. Just before I call the question, I just would like to also comment, I'm excited from the standpoint that I'm already aware that Sanage and Highlands have also sent us letters of support for the ferry, and I'm anticipating the other municipalities will be sending it to us in the next short while because of summer recess. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 7, 7.1, correspondence requiring council decisions. Oh my goodness. I'm going to look to my corporate officer. Can you help me pronounce this person's name?
Ella.
Is it Ella, Ella Astragunna? Thank you. Which is the Lost Votes Campaign regarding requests for support to allow permanent residents to vote in municipal elections. Mr. Willa, council?
I'm going to make a motion that we support this endeavor, Mr. Mayor, that I've, I've found during the election campaign that this impacts a large number of people within our community, and I think this is a step in the right direction. So I move that we support the right for these residents in our community to vote in municipal elections, so that's permanent residents.
Okay, and just to help you, are you looking for the mayor to just write a letter of support back to these people? What would you like to do?
I think beyond that, I think us showing support as a community by way of a motion that's public.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councillor Parkinson seconded it. Okay, any discussion? Councillor Kobayashi, and then Councillor Baxter?
Yes, Your Worship, I just have one question. I fundamentally, I actually agree with this, because you're paying taxes, can't vote, just doesn't seem democratic to me. But the issue I have is that I still don't understand why neither, you know, why this is supported by the provincial government, neither the provincial or the federal government. I guess, is that the price of being a Canadian citizen? I don't know. I don't understand why. And, you know, we want to do municipally, it may just be a moot point, but anyways.
And I think in response, they're advocating at all levels, Councillor Kobayashi, so this is our acknowledgement, but they're advocating with the provincial and federal governments. And my understanding is, I think something will be coming to UBCM in this as well.
Councillor Kobayashi again. Councillor Baxter?
I just wanted clarification on what the motion is.
Sure. I believe the motion is that the correspondence from Lost Votes Campaign regarding support to allow permanent residents to vote in municipal elections be received. And is there anything else that you want?
Sorry, just to clarify, I'm moving, not that we receive it, that it's a motion of support by this council, that we endorse the right for permanent residents to be able to vote in municipal elections.
There you go.
So it's not part of the motion to communicate it to the provincial government?
Yeah, not presently, no.
Okay, but we can introduce that after we've discussed this?
Yeah, absolutely, or you could do a friendly amendment if you like.
In response, Councillor Baxter, I believe if you look at their webpage, that's already happening. It might be superfluous.
Okay, I just got the impression that they were asking us to request the provincial government to make the necessary changes. But it, it's open to interpretation, that line.
So I'm just going to read the one line in it, because it's bold, oh, for me. It's, and the one line says, this is at the end of the letter, "We hope that you will take this issue to your city council today and pass a motion in support of lost votes to request the provincial government to make necessary changes to allow permanent residents to vote."
How about I just amend the original motion to include motion of support by us, and a request that the provincial government explore this?
Thank you.
You got, you got that? Okay. Do I need to vote on an amendment? amended it? Okay, good. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? We are now on to 8.1, new business, Lookout Dam, Lookout Brook Dam Upgrade Design Options. The committee considered options for the future of Lookout Dam, Brook Dam, and has made the following recommendations. Does council have any questions Councillor Kobayashi?
Yes, I just, I just need confirmation from Brent. Brent, again, I kept on reading that, that report several times, and I cannot clearly find, it almost looks like they were reviewing past reports, but, you know, it's signed off by two peeners, and yet, there's not a definitive statement that says, you know, it's going to fail. It does talk, it talked about the 1 in 5,000-year event that could happen, but it just seems like we were doing a pretty good job. This is how I interpreted it. We were doing a pretty good job of maintaining it, but we just haven't got all the proper guards in for that 1 in 5,000-year event. So I guess my question to you is, is there actually a statement that's been signed off by the peeners stating, "This is unsafe"? You know, I can't find that clear delineation anywhere.
No, there is no such clear statement, through your worship. However, the upgrades that are specified would be after investigation and further, and further works, and it's to meet the requirements of the dam safety branch. And in reviewing and considering, in regards to an earthquake event, the 1 in 5,000 is a design earthquake, and we can say that the dam was unlikely to be built to that earthquake standard. It is a higher standard than is seen previously, but it is the new standard that dams have to be designed and maintained to. We can't say that it meets that standard at present.
Sorry, but it doesn't say, it won't either, or it will, it can. It doesn't say neither. I guess what concerns me more, I just heard one of the citizens say, "Tonight, there's another dam we should be looking at," and I heard whisper of that at the, at Committee of the Whole, and that seems to concern me a little more right now, to tell you the truth. I actually went up and took a look at, at the dam. I'm not a civil engineer by any means, but, you know, you guys are doing a great job maintaining and everything. I don't know, but I wasn't even aware of this other little lake and other dam, and that's got my, hairs in the back of my neck standing up a little bit right now. But, so like I said, it doesn't say, it doesn't say one way or the other, so we're assuming the worst-case scenario then, basically.
We have to, by the consideration of the legislation.
Councillor Baxter?
I just wanted to clarify for, for Councillor Kobayashi and the rest of us discussing this, the second dam mentioned is on private property, and according to the Owners Liability Act, it's the responsibility of the owner of that property.
Councillor Parkinson?
Yeah, I'd be prepared to move the recommendation in the agenda. Basically, it has three, three parts to it.
Sure. Did you want to read it out, or did you want?
I think I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that we're dealing with the one in the agenda, not the one on the staff report, because there's been some additions in the agenda. I would move that one.
So what I'm going to do, so I've got a mover, but I'm going to read out the recommendation and just so that, and then you can say, yes, that's it, and then I'll look for a seconder. So the recommendation is that staff proceed with the preparation of a preliminary design for the rock fill buttress option to upgrade Lookout Brook Dam and associate works, including preparation of a Class B cost estimate for all required works, and that an invitation be extended to the geotechnical engineer to attend a future Committee of the Whole meeting to respond to questions from council and support a better understanding of the report, and further that staff, excuse me, and further that staff apply for a grant from the UBCM Community Emergency Preparation Fund Strategic Mitigation, structural, excuse me, mitigation stream for safety upgrades to Lookout Brook Dam. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? So moved by Councillor Parkinson, seconded by Councillor Jensen. Any other discussion? Councillor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. Last week, I had opposed the motion after some, some discussion and back and forth, and, and so I would just like some clarification, because how I, my understanding, after discussion last week, was that Parts 1, that we proceed with the preparation of a preliminary design, et cetera, et cetera, and Part 3, that we apply for the grant, were subject to meeting the, with the geotechnical engineer. And that's, that's, if I interpreted that correctly, that's what my concern was, was the subject to, because it would delay our ability to, to, to do the necessary work to preserve the dam and apply for that grant. However, when I read the motion, the motion says that we're still going to proceed with the preparation, and we're still going to apply for the grant, and it isn't subject to the meeting with the geotechnical engineer. So I just want that clarification, because if that's the case, and we're still going to do the work, then I'm satisfied with the motion. But we had lots of back and forth, and perhaps I was just a wee bit fuzzy last week.
Councillor Parkinson, you're the mover, so you can, you can clarify how you meant it.
I did not mean it to be subject to the meeting with the geotechnical engineer because of the concerns raised about the timing for grant funding. So we'll be moving forward, and we'll deal with further information as we get it, which, who knows what it'll be until we get it.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that clarification, Councillor Parkinson, so I will be supporting the motion, and it is really clear that this is, this is a jewel in the community. And I think, I think the positives for keeping that, that park is far outweighs anything else. And my comment still stands that in addition to the work that we're going to do to preserve that dam, that we also seize the opportunity to make that, that park more user-friendly and more accessible for, for young families to, to the water by doing some perhaps minor upgrades to the beach area and stuff. So I don't want that to get lost, but I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other, any other comments before I, oh, it was, it was Councillor Jensen who was the seconder? Any other discussion before I call the question? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Nobody opposes. 8.2, Notice of Motion Regarding the Sarah Beckett Memorial Park. The Rotary Club, you have it on the table in front of you, the Rotary Club has submitted a request to council to consider contributing to the construction of the Sarah Beckett Memorial Playground. There is a recommendation, and what is the will of council?
I move that we contribute $5,000 towards the construction of the park.
Great, thank you. Moved by Councillor Baxter, seconded by Councillor Kobayashi. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, the only thing I would like to say is, I would like to thank Councillor Kobayashi. He definitely stepped up to bring a notice to this, and so thank you for, for letting this not slip through the cracks. Well done. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Nobody opposed. Moving on to bylaws. 9.1, Bylaw Number 1701, Official Community Plan Amendment, Omnibus Amendments. I need a, I guess I'm moving a third and a final. Move third reading, Your Worship? Thank you.
Second.
Great, so we're going to stick with the same movers and seconders again. So it's moved by Councillor Logan, seconded by Councillor Baxter. Any discussion on third? Councillor Parkinson?
When first and second?
I'll look to staff. 24th of June. It's a long time ago. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? I got a final, moved by Councillor Logan, seconded by Councillor Baxter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Bylaw Number 175101, Officers' Bylaw Amendment, Final Reading, moved by Councillor Parkinson, seconded by Councillor Jensen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 9.3, Bylaw Number 1775, Main Sewer, 600 Long Langhome Drive, Final Reading. Move final? Thank you. Moved by Councillor Logan, seconded by Councillor Kobayashi. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 9.4, Bylaw Number 1776, Central Sewer, 600 Langhome Drive, Final Reading. 9.4, bylaw number 1776, Central Sewer, 600 Langhome Drive, final reading.
Move final?
Thank you. Moved by councillor Baxter, seconded by councillor Jensen. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Bylaw number 1778, Main Sewer, 49495 Webb, first, second, and third reading? Thank you.
Second, first.
Moved by councillor Kobayashi, seconded by councillor Baxter. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. I have second, it has been moved by councillor Kobayashi and Baxter. Discussion? And second? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Move third? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. 9.6, bylaw number 1779, let's do this all over again, West Sewer, 495 Webb Place, first, second, and third reading. Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor Logan. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Second, moving second, I have Jensen and Logan. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Third, same mover, seconder. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. We are on to 9.7, bylaw number 1784, Main Sewer, 3355, St. Troy Place, first, second, and third reading. Moved by councillor Kobayashi, seconded by councillor Baxter. Thank you, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Move on to second, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to third, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Hang in there, councillor Parkinson.
It's my silent protest about the nonsense of having to do this for any property that comes in.
It wasn't very silent, was it? I shouldn't have provoked you. 9.6, bylaw number 1785, West Sewer, 3355, St. Troy Place, first, second, and third reading. Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor Parkinson? Do you want to second these? Thank you, sir. All right, excellent. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to second, any discussion? None, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Third, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. And I'm sorry, was that 9.8? Did I do, did I do? That was 9.8? Excellent. Okay. Councillor Jensen just wanted to keep going. He just would like to relive it. We don't have any in camera, so we don't have anything to release in camera, so I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you, councillor Logan. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.